Jason, today's episode of the Lee's Summit Town Hall podcast is brought to the good people by Budget Blinds of Lee's Summit.
Budget Blinds.
Did you know the Budget Blinds is your home for the signature series shades?
I did know, and I would like to say-
It's good that you knew that because we've only been trying to tell people about it for a while now.
Yeah, I would like to state for the record, all hail our robot shade overlords.
Do you know what is even better?
Choices.
Choices as spring approaches, this is your store. And if you're looking to upgrade your home or say, hey, maybe, you know, you've got some lonely fam- lowly, lowly family of friends across the state line over in Johnson County. There's going to be a Budget Blinds over there too. Coming soon, Budget Blinds of Overland Park.
There you go. So we would like to give our congratulations that you here in Lee's Summit have your hometown backyard blinds and window treatments dealers. And now you can send your friends that live, who made the poor, poor decision to live in Johnson County to the Budget Blinds in Overland Park. And you're going to get the same family treatment that you get here in downtown Lee's Summit.
So if after May, you want to go see our friends at Budget Blinds of Overland Park, or if you're right here in the friendly confines of Lee's Summit and you head downtown Lee's Summit to our friends, go in there. Tell them Jason next thing you-
Hello again, and welcome to Lee's Summit Town Hall, the weekly podcast about what you can do to make a difference. I am Jason Norbury, and I, as always, I am joined by a man who is reminiscing about our first fake spring. It's Nick Parker, the publisher of Link to Lee's Summit.
You know, I know it does it every spring, but it still gets me every time.
I know. I'm like, oh, it's spring. And then it's like 40 degrees and wet for a week. So yeah, it's, that's okay. I enjoyed, I, I, I look after this last year, I'm appreciating all the good weather we can get, like any good, I'm just going to take it. I'm not going to complain.
Take all of the good things, except them all.
Yes. So, ah, Link to Lee's Summit, as always, in rains, the source for all the news you need about our very fine city. And our unofficial sponsor today is that necessary rain. It is cold and it is wet and it will be most of the rest of the week. But the, we needed it. We, my wife planted some stuff in our garden and like those sorts of things. The grass needs a little bit of water to sort of start the springtime stuff, although that means mowing. So I take it all back. To heck with rain anymore.
Look, I don't, I don't argue the necessity of it. I'm just saying it only needs to happen when I'm sleeping.
Oh.
Rain doesn't need to happen when I'm awake. It only needs to happen while I'm sleeping.
Nick, is anything happening?
Uh, not a lot is happening. Really, Jason, like city council, nah, nothing really exciting. There's a few notes I do want to pass on from Board of Education, just, just a couple of little things. Thursday's board meeting, the Board of Education will vote on the administration's recommendation for a resolution going against a proposed state legislation right now about charter schools and school choice is the phrase you have often heard about.
Oh, so are we gonna, is this going to be a, a conversation now about like what the benefits or negatives of school choice or charter schools, or whatever we're calling it these days? That's what our podcast is about now?
Right. I'm not going there. No, I do not want to wade into that.
Nick does not want hate mail that much.
You know, I like a little conflict every once in a while. That one, no matter where you are, there's no winning.
No.
They're also going to get an update on the construction project. So if you remember Jason recently, a bond issue, our last election, part of that were updates and construction at Lee's Summit High School. So there's going to be an update on that for the Board of Education. And then, you know, here's the fun part, because we're getting to what we're really doing this week. We're talking about the upcoming election. So one of the things the board has to do by state statute is they have to set a date for reorganization. So after the election, they reform the board, they have their election for officers, for president, for vice president. So that recommendation is that it will be set for April 15th, and the board will make that decision on Thursday of this week.
Well, speaking of board officers, we have this week's interview.
We do. Coming up right now is Ryan Murdock, the incumbent and current president of the Board of Education. And he is running for reelection in the upcoming election. There, I said the word. How many times did I say election there, Jason?
At least one more time would be necessary, please.
The election's coming up, and here's our interview with Ryan Murdock.
We are here with Ryan Murdock, incumbent and candidate for the Lee's Summit R7 School Board. Ryan, how are you today?
I am doing well. Thank you very much for having me. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you for coming on.
There a little bit. Did you forget our topic?
Me?
Yeah.
Ah, yeah, I get confused every, you know, and we have, whenever we've had Ryan on, we've had such a broad, varied sets of conversations about the school board or the school district or the school district or a school district. So it was a little confusing for me to do that. So Ryan, you're here instead of as board member Ryan or Murdoch, you are coming in as candidate Murdoch, and that's a little bit different, but, uh, you know, the gist is basically the same. So we're going to start you with the, with the first and probably the softest ball question that we, that we can start with. Why are you running for reelection?
Number one is kids, staff and community. Um, you know, I was a teacher for almost a decade and a half. And so, um, I still have the desire to volunteer and serve, uh, the kids and staff within our community here. I think the secondary reason is we have a lot of things going on in the district right now that unfortunately either got put on pause or have slowed down significantly due to the pandemic. And I would love an opportunity to see many of those issues through. And, you know, one of the big ticket items obviously would be to get to see the bond projects through as well. So, uh, number one though, is to just continue to serve the students and staff of the district.
Well, let's, let's stick with a kind of a theme there a little bit. As of the posting of this interview, your, your responses to our, our candidate Q and A will have been up for a week. And in that, in that you talked about some of your priorities, which you just, you mentioned, but one of them was some more, and here's the word you used, meaningful advances in the equity plan. What, what do you think you'd like to see happen with that equity plan?
You know, I've gotten that question recently from numerous people, and the equity plan is obviously incredibly broad. You know, there's six huge goals and many of the things that go on within the district fall under the equity plan, even if it's not specifically mentioned within the equity plan. But there's two things in particular that I really would love to see us get moving a little bit quicker on. Number one is to open up opportunity and access to all of the programs within our districts, uh, to our district for all of our students. We have some very large discrepancies in access to programs throughout our district. And that doesn't mean necessarily just from an academic side. It can also mean from an activity side, a club side. We have some schools who offer some clubs and activities, other schools don't. We need to figure out a way to open up those kinds of opportunities and accesses. Dr. Buck would say it's remove barriers. I, I tend to liken it to, um, an opportunity and access to all of those different areas. The second thing is, is that I do think we need to push forward quickly with maintaining and hiring diverse staff. One of the things we know, um, and we're not alone, by the way, in the region, is that our staff doesn't necessarily reflect our student population. And so while COVID may have slowed down some of those initiatives, I do think, um, ramping up our virtual recruitment tool, getting back out to the colleges, universities, um, our HBCUs, and then also maintaining and especially really growing, the grow your own program through MIC, I think we really need to get that moving quickly.
All right. So let's, uh, let's get the, one of the things that I think all the candidates talk about, and honestly, I think every candidate for school board in the history has talked about is improving communication between the board and the constituents as they go through. You mentioned that in your priorities and what have you. So let's start with the simple one. How in the three years that you've been on the board has, uh, has that improved? And, and what do you anticipate? How do you want to drive it even further forward?
So I think you're right. Everybody's always going to say, we need to figure out a way to communicate more efficiently with the community. That being said, in the last three years, we have opened up new avenues in terms of trying to disseminate information out and get input back in, whether that be through panorama survey tools, which now the community has had access to on multiple topics. I mean, I can think just right off the top, obviously, you know, we sent out huge surveys regarding the, um, facilities master plan and the boundary studies where we were finally able to get large quantities of community input back to us. And then essentially look through that data, what are the concerns? What are people actually excited about? That kind of thing. So we have increased some of those opportunities for people, um, to be able to communicate back with us. You know, we have multiple opportunities through groups in the community or committees that people can be involved in as well. And we put out so much information through either social media, our schools, email blasts, all those kinds of things. The way that I think we could improve some of that is making sure that we have targeted communication where we are, whatever the topic is that we are, that we don't bog it down with too much information in one email, for example. I don't know about you guys, we get the emails too. My kids are at school and they can be long. And whether or not people are actually getting that information, I'm not for sure. So I do think we have a lot of avenues for communication. But I do think we can do a better job of essentially narrowing the focus of those.
So let me, let me ask you a little bit broader. Have you thought that at least, I will say in the last, you know, as you're, as you're coming along, we won't, I won't blame you for the things that happened before you were on the board, at least not in this question. Your, do you think the district is doing a, a good, decent, poor, what kind of job do you think the district is doing in that communication at this point?
Um, I think we're doing between a decent and good. I think that it would fall in between those two because I think that there are certain topics that we do, um, a really, really good job on. We're doing, at least in my opinion, we're doing a great job on the facilities updates, um, the bond project updates, communication, things like that. I think have gone really, really well. Um, from a, just a decent job, and part of this, by the way, falls back on the board. So we can take responsibility for this is the communication pieces around the how and why for some of the decisions that have been made this school year, uh, in particular, um, surrounding the pandemic and COVID-19. And sometimes, you know, in trying to get the message out essentially as quickly as possible so that people are at least aware of the decision, sometimes we don't necessarily articulate the why of the decision very well. And it's left then to interpretation by the community, um, which is good and bad.
Gotcha. Well, let's, let's take that and spin that forward a little bit. When we asked all the candidates to rank their response, that, what they felt like the district's response was to the pandemic and how they've managed this process, the, um, overall, your ranking was higher, uh, than anybody else. But you said in there that mistakes were made. Um, so you didn't give yourself the maximum score, which was, I think, fair, especially if you're going to admit that there were mistakes. So let's, let's start there. What, you gave a six out of seven, but you said that there were some mistakes. So what were some of the mistakes that were made as you went along?
Well, I'm going to give just one real big example of mistakes, and it's one that I want to own as, you know, I mean, I am the board president this year. And so I helped Dr. Buck in terms of deciding, um, some of the agendas of meetings and things like that. And so, um, I want to be very upfront and own this one, you know, in November, we had multiple discussions about the learning mode going on within the district. So we had made decisions in August, allowed administration to move us into hybrid, move four through six into full time. And then as that surge in cases occurred in November, we had back-to-back meetings, November 17th and 19th, where we ping ponged on decisions of what to do, um, primarily with the elementary school kids at that particular time. That's one of the biggest regrets that I have, um, from the year. Doesn't mean that there aren't others, right? Just giving you the biggest example, um, of a mistake. Um, I really, really wish that we had only had the one meeting on November 19th, that we had gotten all of the data that we actually got Tuesday and Wednesday after the November 17th meeting in order to make one decision, um, for, uh, the students and staff, because it really put staff in an awkward spot of having to flip around by Monday of the next week. And it put parents in a really, really tough, tough, uh, spot as well, just from a childcare standpoint. And so that's one of the biggest mistakes, um, that I've seen, uh, that I, that I would say that happened during the pandemic.
I want to link this, this conversation with the topic you had before about communication. Because this is a point where I think you will hear people in the community say there's been maybe a breakdown in communication with the, as you put it, the hows and the whys, um, behind decisions. How can you do, and I, I'm going to say this both you personally and you as a collective board, how can you do a better job of balancing the, the communication part of letting, you know, inviting people in to hear their opinions and their thoughts, but then also giving the hows and whys so that even if they don't get their way, the communication process has happened at an acceptable level?
Million dollar question right there, right?
Well, I mean, a million dollars to everybody would actually help if you wanted to do that.
You know, um, I think, I think there's two parts to that question. Number one is that, um, on a lot of the decisions, we did have a lot of input. Unfortunately, the input diverged, right? You had, um, different groups within the community who wanted very, very different things, going through this particular school year. Um, so when we hear people, um, either write us or in some cases they'll text message or call us or something like that, um, that becomes, um, difficult because now you have conflicting opinions. And by the way, you know, we did, as we went into some of the decisions, um, this year, there were times that we were able to get input from staff. I know Dr. Shelton was able to even meet with staff, um, in some large groups prior to some of the decisions that were made. And I think where some of the breakdown occurs is that if the decision wasn't what a lot of either parents wanted in some cases, or in some cases what staff wanted, um, to give the reasons for why those decisions actually happened. Was it because the medical panel that we had, along with all of the different recommendations led us to this particular decision? That typically is what ended up happening. Um, and it is very, very difficult. The, the other thing I would say, guys, is that, you know, we had, um, a lot of people message us, obviously, throughout this school year. But a lot of times I think what ended up happening is people didn't recognize that there was somebody essentially sending the exact opposite message at the same time that they were sending theirs. So it was open the schools fully. Then you would have somebody that we need to be virtual for the entire school year and everything in between, obviously, right?
Right.
And that is from staff, that's from community members, business leaders. We got messages from everybody and they were all over the board. And I, I would also say that that's why it's difficult to articulate the why on that, right? You know, we heard from everybody. Now we got to make a decision.
Well, let me, let me, let me ask, ask this then. This is going to be two parts. So the, the first part, I think of that communication is from the dais. How can, how can you as board members do a better job of explaining those things from the dais? Cause I think it all starts there, right? And look, I mean, if you're not, if you're not like Jason or I, we're, we're nuts. We watch all of the meetings and we like to watch all meetings. But they're long and not everybody's got the stomach for that, right? So how do you communicate while you're there on the dais to people so that they know why votes are happening?
Well, I think you hit on one point, the meetings already are kind of long. So if we are going to spend time articulating the why for every single decision, the meetings are going to be incredibly long. That being said, on a lot of the really big ticket, um, decisions that we have before us, I think it probably would be, um, incumbent upon members and myself, by the way, to make sure that members get this opportunity to essentially give their why prior to a vote. Um, you know, I think that there's a misconception, by the way, that the seven of us are out talking about all of these issues and arranging the votes prior to the meeting and all those kinds of things, which we're not allowed to do. Um, and so a lot of times, you know, we've read all of the information that comes to us. I think on an individual level, we all are very prepared as we come into these particular meetings. And clearly everybody is going to have an idea of kind of what they think should happen. Once we listen to all of the presentations, listen to our fellow board members, then I think with some of these decisions, we can do a better job from the dais of actually giving the why right before we actually vote, you know? Here's why I believe this is the right decision. This is why I think it's good for the district. And then we could move on to the next person. I think that would be beneficial.
I would love to actually have you guys hold on to that. I, I, this is a criticism of some, sometimes different board members seem to want to just vote and not say anything about their why. And I, you know, I'd love a little bit less of that as we, as we go forward. So let's, let's talk about some of those decisions. Uh, so there have been a couple of times, and I will, I'll preface this by saying, you know, if you, if you take a longer look back, um, the, the last several six to seven years of the district's administration history has sort of been a story about a board superintendent relationship, you know, going, well, two of them going sour, but for, for different reasons and for different personalities and all those things. And once again, I'm not going to, I'm not going to judge you for Dr. McGahey, but, um, or even honestly spend a lot of time talking about Dr. Carpenter's exit. But I think there are some different personality conflicts and management conflicts inherent in, uh, both relationships souling and ending. There's been a couple of times now throughout the course of this COVID response where the board has gone, you know, in a different direction than the recommendation of the superintendent in terms of what a mode of learning or which grades are going to be there, or most recently the decision to go to a four-day in-person model, which wasn't, you know, was not on the public table, um, that, that came out there and was, uh, it seemed to be fairly clearly a board decision, not a, not an administration decision. How do you, have you felt like that has affected your relationships? Or how are you as a member of the board managing that relationship to maintain that, uh, a good working relationship at the same time as you're going to have these different opinions on, on big, this is your big, this is big stuff. This isn't like, you know, how much money goes into the janitorial supply line item on the budget? This is like, where is my kid going to go to school on Tuesday? Um, sort of large things for people. So how are you, how are you working that relationship when you guys are having some notable and, and public disagreements?
First, um, Dr. Buck and I and Dr. Buck and the board, um, I think I can, I can say this very, very safely, have an excellent working relationship. Um, and I, and I mean that sincerely. He and I talk, um, as you might expect, quite often, um, as there's been numerous topics that have come up throughout, um, even the last few weeks. I mean, we talk pretty much on a daily basis. Um, so that being said, I think we have a wonderful working relationship. We do a very good job of communicating with one another, and I'm meaning that, by the way, from the entire board and Dr. Buck, uh, do a great job. He is also fantastic at communicating out to all of the members, keeping us updated on what's going on, what's coming, um, up in the future, that kind of thing. In regards to the actual decisions where we have ended up going against, um, a recommendation, I think the first thing that is important to note is that it's not as often as people think. I think there is some people who think that we've gone out and just gone against every single recommendation he's made. And that's not accurate. Um, but I do think, you know, in the fall, we had recommendations, um, from the Jackson County Health Department to that everybody should be virtual. Um, and so Dr. Buck, um, having come into the district just two months prior, in terms of starting, he ended up having a recommendation, hey, here's what the health department says. But we also have our medical panel, Johns Hopkins University is saying, if we're going to have kids in school, the younger kids could be there. That's how that decision ended up, um, coming to fruition. I think what a lot of people are looking towards is this most recent decision in terms of going against the recommendation, um, from Dr. Buck in regards to the secondary students. And what I've told people who have asked me about that decision is we knew going into January 14th, that we were going to have, um, a mixed bag of, um, essentially what people thought we should do from medical, uh, communities. So at that particular time, we're dealing with, um, recommendations telling us to be in person from multiple organizations, meaning full, full-time in person from multiple organizations. We have a couple who aren't comfortable with us being, uh, in person full-time and wanting us to be in a hybrid mode. And so Dr. Buck, um, I think aired towards those recommendations and that's absolutely fine. The issue was if we could have gone back that night as a board, knowing essentially how the vote ended up turning out six to one, and said, Dr. Buck, I don't think that there's going to be support from the entire board for your recommendation. That would have been a great way for us to go back, collaborate and come back with a different recommendation. But we're in a time sensitive, um, issue right there where we had to make a decision, um, on what we were going to do to make sure that teachers and staff and parents had time to actually prepare for what the learning mode was going to be. We couldn't wait essentially until next week because then we would have done exactly what we did in November, which was give a 48-hour turnaround time. And we wanted to try to avoid that.
You talked to in your, in your response, another thing, and this is kind of a running theme of the balancing act that is, that is being on the, on, on the board about you can be a champion for the schools, but also advocate for change. What are some, what are, what are some other things that you are looking maybe to make changes in the district?
Well, I think one, when we say the word change, that's, it's pretty broad. I, I would say, what are some of the priorities, right? That we need to be able to, um, advance. So for example, we need to really push our real world learning objectives going forward. One change that, and I hope everyone understands, right now I'm speaking just from a personal level, I'm not speaking for the board here, is that I do think we need to reevaluate our literacy programs within the district right now. I know that's been a, a focus of a lot of community members as well, but I actually think even from an internal standpoint, we're recognizing we need to review and look at, um, our literacy programs within the district because they're kind of the key to everything. Um, I also think we need to change and continue to try to expand our early childhood offerings, to make sure the kids are entering our district, um, with it as ready to go as we possibly can. And by the way, that would be a huge part of the equity plan as well for student improvement, um, that kind of thing. I mean, it fits perfectly in there as well. So those are kind of some of the, the big items that I'm seeing that we need to be able to do, uh, as we push forward here into the next few years.
You have also often mentioned, uh, being an advocate for special education. And I know that's a, that's a, a personal thing for you as well and your family. Can you just really quickly talk a little bit about what, you know, what you're looking at from your perspective?
Well, I think two things. Number one, um, I don't hesitate to share our personal story, with the trials and kind of tribulations of dealing with the special education system in general. That's not just a reflection upon our district. It's a reflection of trying to navigate the special education world in public schools across the country is, um, can be very, very difficult. And if you are not an advocate for your child at all times, things can get missed that you never maybe would even think about. You know, our, our son Isaac, who, uh, has required a wheelchair, you know, ever since he could move it himself. You know, we started the process with the district even before he started attending Great Beginnings. And then he attended Great Beginnings, uh, for a year, but even during that time, um, when he started elementary school, there were still things that weren't ready, um, that he had no access to. Um, you know, art tables that were above his head, for example, right? You know, simple things like not being able to get to a water fountain during the day. So a lot of these access needs that impacted us on a very, very personal level, um, are things that are impacting other families throughout the district as well. Isaac won't be the first, the, the last person to ever have a wheelchair in Longview Farm or at Summit Lakes or at Lee's Summit West, right? There's going to be a lot who come after him and we need to be prepared for those things. But there's more obviously than just physical disabilities that we have to continue to look out for in the special education realm. You know, whether it be learning disabilities, behavior issues that all require, um, a lot of extra resources, a lot of extra care, compassion. But more than anything, I want it to be easier for families to navigate the process because it is very, very difficult and sometimes incredibly time-consuming, um, to try to get through all of the process and hoops to actually get some of the accommodations that you need.
I have, uh, two last questions as we wrap this up. And, and the next one is, so as a member of the board, as a member of the Board of Education, how can you help make that kind of, of change? Because a lot of that is in the weed stuff. How can you do it from the seat that you're in?
Right. Um, it absolutely is in the weed stuff, but the best part about it is, is that because we're talking about opportunity and access, we charge Dr. Buck to put those kinds of initiatives into our equity plan, right? We give Dr. Buck the directive, hey, here's some things that we have been hearing from community members. And by the way, it's not just a small, small group here. Here's some of the things that we are hearing. These are some of the things that we need to be looking out for. We charge you essentially with, as a part of our board priority number one, which is looking at everything in an equitable lens. Anyway, this is your priority to, uh, make sure it's successful. We need to address that in our equity plan. So you charge Dr. Buck with that and make sure that it gets delegated to, uh, the proper staff to actually make those changes. And then you just follow up with Dr. Buck. You hold, you hold them accountable for, once we give him that priority. And that priority is already there, right? We, that priority is a part of, um, the district right now in board priority one.
Jason, would you like to give him the big question?
Yes. So we, we warned you that we are coming with one question, that there was a correct answer or an incorrect answer, depending if you're a positive person like me or a negative nabob like, uh, Nick Parker over there.
That's true.
If we were to come to you with a plate, two plates, one in my one hand contains a plate of tacos and another in my other hand that contains a plate of hamburgers, which one are you taking?
No, that's, that's easy. That was an easy question, guys. You go- No, that's, that's easy. That was an easy question, guys. You go tacos.
They're correct. Well done.
Here we go.
Well done. Well done with the correct answer. There we are.
Your life will be much better now.
I was all worried about this question. That wasn't.
Good. Then we, then we have, then we have successfully fraudulently scared you for no reason at all. So well done. Well done by that. Well, thank you, Ryan, for, uh, coming on. Good luck in your election or in this process. And, uh, and once again, thank you for giving us some time and having us come in.
Yeah, no problem, guys. Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. We appreciate it. And that will wrap us up for this week. We'll talk to everybody next time.